Call to order, invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Hutchinson.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you so much that we live in a free country where we can come and meet together, join together, and meet freely in a society where you don't have to worry about backlash. Thank you, Father, we can speak our minds and have the freedom of expression in a country such as this. Thank you, Father, for democracy and the freedoms that we have under that, both federally and the state and locally. Thank you for our fine citizens of Halton City, and I pray, Father, your blessings upon this city. Thank you, Father, for this meeting. I pray for wisdom for all. I pray, Father, that you'll give us hearts and minds that would better serve the citizens of Halton City. Thank you so much, Father, for our troops, and I pray that you'll protect them. I pray, Father, that you'll keep them safe. And I pray that you'll give the wisdom to those who need to make the decisions about the war. I pray that you'll bring them home safely. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Richard. Announcement and events, Chuck Barnett, our Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, ladies and gentlemen. Halton City volunteers can help with the Susan G. Coleman Breast Cancer Three-Day Walk without having to go the sixty miles which is required for that walk. The Halton City Senior Center has been designated as the lunch preparation site for the event. Everyone is invited to help make sandwiches meals for up to fifteen hundred walkers per day. If you do the calculation in three days, that's forty-five hundred sandwiches, that's a lot of peanut butter. Lunch preparation will start at noon and end at 7:00 PM on Thursday, October the twenty-fifth through Saturday, twenty-seventh, against three-day event at that center. The walk will take place this weekend, call 817-834-8021 to volunteer. As is pronounced, the Howling Halloween, which is the library's annual not-so-scary party, will take place at 2:00 PM this Saturday at the Halton City Public Library. Children and their parents are invited to participate. There will be stories, crafts, refreshments, and the kids can trick-or-treat, costumes are encouraged. The Halton City Halloween Carnival also will take place Wednesday, October thirty-first, at the Halton City Recreation Center from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. A costume contest will be held at 7:00 PM. In addition, there will be games of fortune teller, story time, face painting, bounce houses, as well as free popcorn, candy, and goodie bags for the kids. There will be hot dogs, chips, and drinks available for about $2. For information, please call 817-831-6464 for further information. Beginning tomorrow morning, city council chambers will be getting an upgrade. The walls will be painted, a projector will be added to assist with presentations, and the old seats that are presently in the council chambers will be replaced along with new carpet. The work is scheduled to be completed before the next council meeting, which is scheduled for November the twelfth. That gives us about three weeks to make these renovations. Another upgrade of city facilities will be coming to Halton Road Park and Broadway Park. Both parks will be receiving EVOs play units, special playground equipment for the youngsters. And I was hoping we had a picture of that to be shown on the screen. There it is. The installation should be completed by early December. These are very unique playground equipment. There's only one other city in the state of Texas that has this EVOs equipment. In addition, Halton Road Park will also be getting a new display sign that will upgrade residents about recreation activities as well as city events. The two additions to the parks is extremely important because that was part of the council's strategic goals that was discussed during your work sessions at the beginning of the year. The Halton Recreation Center has begun work on issuing ID cards, identification cards, to its patrons. The cards gain access to the facility through a scanning system and are free to the city residents. Again, those cards, those ID cards are free. This is to provide more security to everyone who is utilizing our facility. Non-residents may obtain a card to use the facility, however, there is a non-resident fee. Please call 817-831-6464 should you have any questions about the new system. Today is the first day, and I will try, this is my second opportunity to do this because I remember a year ago I messed this up as I was made fun of about Roger Rabbit by the mayor. Today is the first day of the National Red Ribbon Week. Did you hear that, Mayor? National Red Ribbon Week.
Phenomenal.
Bervil SD is asking everyone to wear a red ribbon to show support of anti-drug and awareness programs. The red ribbons have become a symbol for the nation's war on drugs. Ribbons are available at city halls, as a matter of fact, they're out in the hallway. Please take the opportunity to obtain one of these wet weapons. By now, all residents should have received a bin for curbside recycling along with program information delivered inside the bin. However, a special informational postcard was mailed this past week, and Mr. Soriano, is that on the screen? Residents with questions are welcome to call Halton City Water Utility at 817-222-7718. Information is also listed on the city's website at www.haltoncitytx.com and on Channel 27, the city's municipal access channel. Again, recycling is everybody's issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chuck, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So this is the anniversary of Roger Rabbit? Okay, cool. Glad you recognize that. I just have an addendum here on the announcements. Very, very nice, I'm honored and pleased to announce that we had a fundraiser for the Green Girls, the survivors of terrible tragedy here in Halton City a few weeks back, and the It's All Good Resale Shop. This is a Halton City business located at 5012 Stanley Keller. They organized a fundraiser, and when I got this note, they were just about $150 short of $5,000 that they've raised for those little girls. Very pleased about that, appreciate them doing that, of course certainly appreciate all that, everybody that contributed to that. But they've gone out of their way, obviously, to help out the community, and we appreciate them so much. Get a chance, stop by and tell them thank you. All right, the consent agenda is next on the, next item on the agenda. The consent agenda is considered to be self-explanatory and will be enacted by the council with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Approval of the consent agenda authorizes the city manager to implement each item in accordance with staff or board recommendations. And just want to point out that the approval of the, some of the parks purchased of what you just saw on your screen is one of the things on the consent agenda, but we want to make sure everybody knew about that. Ms. Branson?
Oh, I'm ready for a motion when...
Go, fire it will.
Which finish? You were talking about, are you through talking about the parks?
I am through talking.
About the parks?
About the parks.
Okay, I didn't want to cut you off on that. I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion any second. Ms. Sutton?
Yes, for a second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda consisting of items one through seven. Any discussion of motion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Mr. Holcomb got, couldn't get off of his work site today, so he apparently will not be joining us tonight. Next on the agenda, the item eight, flooding and erosion issues. This is an update from City Manager Tom Muir.
Thank you, Mayor. In the Skyline Banner area, the staff is continuing to work with the respective authorities about regarding a cleanup down there, but then we're still working with the property owners that are down there. We sent notices out to the property owners last week. Again, and we've gotten affirmative response from some of those folks, but we are still working at trying to get that up. On November ninth, we are submitting a mitigation grant application. As most people know, we submitted a notice of interest to the state for bringing out a lot of the floodway property and floodplain area property down there around the Skyline Banner area. It was received very favorably, and so we've gone to the next step about actually designating the properties and getting more specific with it. And we'll have that stuff turned in timely on the ninth. But we're still looking at if any funds are going to be available from that process. It's probably going to be summer before we see that, early to midsummer before we see those funds. But we've, we have a high expectation that those things will be looked upon favorably. And so looking at a price tag of about $2 million to deal with that stuff. And again, this is to mitigate the properties over in the Skyline Banner area. In relation to Fenway, Big Fossil Creek, rather, the Bridge Port Fenway area, there's not a whole lot to present in this forum. We're still working towards possible solutions. We've had another one kind of raise its head recently, and we're still pursuing that. I've talked about it with the council in executive session, and we're going to be looking at doing some different things there. But, and then hopefully in the coming weeks, we'll again present something here. And I know I said that last time, but things do keep changing with this thing, it seems. So just not quite at the point to where I can share a whole lot at this point. There was some, I know there was some stuff in the media last week regarding some dead fish in the creek, and that's got nothing to do with the erosion problems or the flooding problems or anything to do with the city. It was a sewer, sewer problem that Fort Worth had, but the media tagged it with us. But that's, just for the folks that saw that, that was not us. Aside from these two areas, just generally, we've gotten preapproval from FEMA to correct a couple of bridges that we had suffered damage in the flood. The bridge at Broadway down on the east side of town, Broadway going towards 26, that bridge there, and the bridge at Glenview just east of Denton Highway. Between the two bridges, it's about $1.2 million in damage. It'd be a 75-25 cost share there, but we've gotten preapproval to proceed with that. So we're going to be taking it to another level with that. And at the appropriate time, we'll bring something towards the council where we can formalize that more, a bit better. But that is tracking. Outside of that, I'll, let's complete my report on the flooding and erosion issues, and I'll take any questions.
Any questions from the dais? From Mr. Muir? All right, if not, we'll, we're going to invite, we had one person sign up wanting to speak, that's Leila Keraway. Leila, you have? Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else have any question or comments? Saying that, we'll move on to item ten, nine, excuse me, item nine. This is a statewide proposition, I mean, resolution for, regarding statewide Proposition 12. This is a bond issue for transportation improvements. I'll just read, this is probably the shortest resolution we've ever had here. This is that resolved that the city of Halton City supports statewide Proposition 12. If approved, $5 billion of new funding will be available to expedite needed transportation improvements. The Dallas-Fort Worth region alone has a 59 billion funding shortfall over the next 25 years. I don't think it's any secret that this state of Texas is in dire straits over funding of transportation. That's why we've kind of got our backs against the wall trying to patch together some fixes with toll roads. I'm not real excited about toll roads, but when it's the only game in town, that's the one you play. But I, this is, you know, small potatoes here, $5 billion. That sounds sad that it's that small potato, but it really is statewide, but at least it's a start. And so I certainly would support that resolution and we'll...
Let me add something. The Regional Transportation Council, which is the, kind of oversees the metropolitan planning organization for the area, requested that the area cities pass something similar to this. And we're, this is something other cities in the area either have done or will be doing. Again, this is, this item is on the ballot for November sixth, it's stated in the cover memo.
Any comments or questions from the dais? Ms. Sutton?
Yeah, I just encourage citizens to look at this proposition, but also to ask those in Congress where this money's going to be allocated. We're not sure how much is going to come to Halton City. We're not sure how much is going to go into the Loop 820 I-35. It would really help if we pass this resolution for y'all to support and call congressmen and say, "We really support this and expect some of these funds to be applied into the roads that affect Halton City," and that will help. So I just want to encourage citizens to, we need you to play your part in this, too.
Now, that would be the, our state legislator, Kelly Hancock.
Yes, sir.
Who, by the way, as information, is going to be in Halton City November the thirteenth, thirteenth, that afternoon, late afternoon, I think it starts at 4:30, 4:30 to 6:00. I told him, most of us are still at work then, but he's going to be about...
He may be changing the time. It's probably going to be late afternoon.
Okay, but anyway, the thirteenth, so if you've got a chance, we'll put that on your calendar to meet with Kelly Hancock. I think it's going to be right in here, too.
Right, I think he had a standing ovation to the council, too.
He got a what?
He had a standing ovation to the council members on that, to that meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. No, not a standing invitation.
Standing invitation, okay.
All right, now we'll entertain a motion to dispose.
An invitation, not an ovation.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number R-007-021-001, supporting statewide Proposition Number 12.
Is there a second? Ms. Sutton?
Yeah, I'll second that with the 021-01, not just 001.
Okay.
Yep, but that's, I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Please register your vote. That is unanimous. Next, under the public hearing section, item 11. Do we want to do both of these at the same time?
It's 10.
Oh, I'm sorry, I sure did, I skipped right over 10. Woo, all right. Item 10, Resolution Number R-2007-022-01. That's consideration or action regarding approval of a resolution authorizing the city attorney to bring condemnation action on behalf of the Halton City Economic Development Corporation to acquire property south of McLean Road between Old Denton Road and Halton Road for economic development purposes.
Yeah, I'll introduce this, Mayor, thank you. Mayor and council, what you've got before you is the possibility of two different tracks that are adjacent to each other, just north of the Cotton Belt Rail Line, south of McLean, east of the UP line, and west of Halton Road. Genada will, comes between the two properties. In following the council's strategic plan with enhancing the park and athletic facilities for the community, these parcels have been identified as a possible place for sports and athletic facilities. And the EDC has been pursuing this based on those stated goals. The, I think there's a, one is a seventeen, about a 17-acre track, and the other one's almost 19 acres. The 17-acre track, we're not going to need all 17 acres, we'll only probably need about half of that. There's just the vacant parcel there. It's a, it's a total, the property encompasses, all 17 acres encompasses the current Revcor site plus a good deal of vacant land to the south between it and the Cotton Belt Line. And that's what we're looking forward to, have a road that would connect the park, the potential park, with Halton Road, and then possibly have some additional fields that would be on that parcel. But the EDC was asking, asked me to present this for council consideration for, to transfer that condemnation, to give them that condemnation authority in hopes of, if it's needed. This is not saying that we are going to be doing that, there's still a long way away from that. But if they had that, then they could move a little bit quicker in pursuing the property. They'll have to pass their own resolution that'll get the acreage of the sites more specific. But if we can deal with this item now instead of later, it could possibly save some time in dealing with that. So that's the reason they're asking for you to consider this, this resolution. And with that, I'll take any questions or comments.
Any questions from the dais?
Let me add one more thing. I didn't talk about how this was funded, well, my cover memo does, but for the people out there, this is going to be funded from some COs that the EDC has already issued. This is not going to be any new debt. This is, we had about a million dollars left over from the property that we bought, from the 55 acres that we bought a couple of years ago regarding just north of Glenview, where the library is currently being built. So there's some leftover money from that, and so that's what we're trying to do with this. Stated use for that money was sports and athletic facilities, and that's what we're going to be doing with it.
Okay, Ms. Reese?
Thank you. Tom, can I get you to elaborate more where this is projected to be in regards to where the library is? To give everyone more of a consensus of what it is we're going to do?
Sure, it's southwest, probably more south than west, but yeah, southwest of it. It's a, it's a stone's throw, basically, it's not very far. But it's, but there are some businesses there, it is an industrial area. The property has been difficult to market from time to time. Actually, one of the other items coming up for consideration here with GST is going to be going in right near it. So this particular part of town's getting a lot of attention tonight.
Okay, well, my only other concern with that area is train tracks and the industrial flow. I mean, it, that general area is relatively highly trafficked.
Right.
You know, and McLean is not the prettiest street to go up and down, and...
And that's why that other track is going to be very important to have that connection over to Halton Road. Genada's not, not the main way to come in. That's going to be mainly for the industrial areas. And frankly, even Genada heading south, if commuter rail is going to be coming in, there's a good chance that Genada will not be able to go through to the south from this because that Cotton Belt Line may need to be elevated.
Because maybe we just might get a rail station there?
Yes. It's looking more and more positive for that, but it's still a lot of things that have to happen first. But, and it may not be, I mean, they've, it may just, they may just keep the at-grade crossing, but I don't know how you can do commuter rail with the UP running up to 40 lines with that at-grade crossing just due east from there. I'm not sure how you can do it without elevating one of the tracks, and I can promise you it will not be the UP line that's going to get elevated. I'd rather do that, but I know that's not going to happen. It'll be the Cotton Belt Line.
Ms. Sutton?
Yeah, House Bill 2912 limited what we could do with 401B funds, and this is one of the, whenever that CO was passed, there was a lot more expanded uses for that $4 million CO funds. And this land fits into the reduced footprint that you can spend that money on in a very nice way. And it's one of the few plots in Halton City that's available for something like a sports facility. So it's kind of a win-win situation for a lot of people, and it fits.
Well, it fits, and with GST and what they're wanting to do over there.
Exactly.
It's going to have some activity over there, and I'd like to think we'd be a good neighbor to GST. I don't think the ball field was exactly heard at all.
Well, there's some more information about what GST is going to do coming up in a later agenda item.
It's coming up in the next item here, but it's, and it's just coincidentally that this stuff is just coming up on the agenda today. It's, it wasn't planned that way, it just kind of happened. So anyway, it's exciting when we have a possibility about possibly expanding our parks, but a lot of things still have to happen before this is reality.
All right, any other questions? And I entertain the motion to dispose. Ms. Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm moved to approve Resolution Number R-2007-022-01.
Ms. Branson?
That would be for a second.
Mr. Hutchinson? For a third? All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution R-2007-022-01. Any further discussion? Please register your votes. And that is unanimous. Now then, moving on to the public hearings section, James, do you want to do 11 and 12 together?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Okay, all right, we'll introduce both 11 and 12, although we'll need, we'll vote separately on them. Item 11 is Z-002-07, conduct a public hearing and are consideration interaction approving an ordinance of the application of George Lambert Converge LLC for a zoning change on Lot 1A and 3A Block 1 Charles Needham Edition from the M1 Light Industrial District to M2 Heavy Industrial District located on the west side of Genada Street, containing approximately 11.4 acres of land, locally known as 4201 Genada Street. And this is for a first reading. Item 12 is CU, what is that?
A conditional use.
Conditional use.
Yes, sir.
I just went blank. Conditional use dash O double, excuse me, dash 003-07, conduct a public hearing and are consideration or action approving an ordinance for the application of George Lambert Converge LLC for a conditional use permit on Lot 1A and 3A Block 1 Charles Needham Edition from the M1 Light Industrial District to M2 Heavy Industrial District located on the west side of Genada Street, containing approximately 11.4 acres of land, locally known as 4201 Genada Street. The conditional use permit is also for a first reading. Take it away, James.
Thank you, Mayor. As you stated, Mayor, these two items is a rezone and a conditional use permit, hence the need for a public hearing. The first ordinance is the applicant is requesting the zoning change from M1 to M2 to secure a metal manufacturing facility to be located at the site. Mr. Lambert, who is here tonight, has provided a brief description of GST manufacturing, and that is in your packet as Exhibit B for the conditional use permit. The applicant is successful in this rezone request. The applicant will need to apply for a conditional use permit, as what the mayor read earlier, for the proposed use. The rezone request is in compliance with the city's land use plan. At their meeting on October ninth, 2007, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this zoning change request from light industrial to heavy industrial, and therefore we're submitting the ordinance with the site plan for the zoning exhibit. For the conditional use permit, after securing approval by the city council for the M2 rezone of the above-mentioned site, in which the mayor brought up, it's at 4201 Genada, and by the way, that is the former Kaiser Panel Building. The applicant is required to apply for a conditional use permit. The conditional use permit does require a site plan, and it does require performance standards. And those performance standards of the business are indicated on the site plan and in Exhibit B of the business profile. Again, these are all provided by Mr. Lambert, and he will give you a detailed explanation tonight. Again, at their meeting on October ninth, 2007, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve this conditional use permit with site plan approval. Therefore, I'm formally submitting the ordinance for that with two exhibits. Exhibit A, the site plan for the ordinance, and Exhibit B, a detailed business profile and performance standards of GST, a metal manufacturing facility. So Mayor, I stand to answer any questions, and also Mr. Lambert is here, and he'd like to make a small presentation before council during the hearing.
Okay, any questions? Okay, any questions from the dais for Mr. Pliska? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Lambert, you want to come up and introduce yourself and say a few words?
Okay. Hi Ken, my name is George Lambert. My wife Sherry's in the audience with me today. We are the sole owners of a business called GST Manufacturing. GST Manufacturing has been engaged in manufacturing virtually anything from steel. The businesses that we acquired in the year two thousand were owned prior to our purchase by Clemens Sheet Metal Works, a company that started in nineteen thirty-three in Fort Worth. It was a second-generation company, and we bought them in two thousand. It's been an interesting ride. We survived nine eleven, and that was an exciting thing for us, kind of a difficult thing for us as well. And now we are in a growth pattern and have been now for, for a good while. The facilities we lease currently are twofold, one located near what you would know as Montgomery Plaza in the downtown Fort Worth area. We, at the time of purchase, saw that facility as, the leased facility is eighty thousand square feet. We saw it as a non-developal zone. Today, it's filled with development. We've, if you want to see good luck, just have us move in, and you will see your whole area outgrow us quickly. Secondly, we have a facility located near the Stockyards on North Side Drive. Both facilities are leased, and our lease terms are good for another three years with a, an option to extend for another five. However, we have a need and have a desire to consolidate those two facilities onto one site. That was originally our plan when we acquired the company, and it's still our plan today. So first and foremost, our desire is over time to have a facility that we can consolidate our hundred and eighty-two employees to one facility site. Secondly, we've undergone a lot of growth lately, so we're in desperate need of more space. And we have been aware of the facility at 4201 Genada for some time, and believe that facility to be ideally suited to accomplish the purposes of GST. So Sherry and I have made an offer to acquire, subject to approval of the zoning change and conditional use permit, to acquire the property. So I thought I'd acquaint you a little bit with the property first, if you've not had an opportunity to see it. For those who've not seen it, this might be beneficial. It's in the Charles Needham Edition. It's approximately eleven acres, which you've already seen. It's bordered by railroads on two sides, close to two sides. There's a little Y area, I think, that you've talked about making into a park. Also understand there'll be some drilling activity on that soon. Right now, it's next door to the vacant Wind Paper Building to the north. Dell Resources is drilling on the west side, and then it's, the facility itself is about a hundred and eighteen thousand square feet of manufacturing space with another four thousand square feet of office space. Building, my guess, was built in the sixties, the original building. It's concrete tilt wall, it looks like concrete tilt wall construction, has had a few additions onto it that were metal fabricated roofs with tilt wall on part of it, sheet metal on the rest. It is a low free height facility, so it lends itself not so much to distribution, but more to manufacturing, as Kaiser Panel was doing. So it's had a limited market ability out in the marketplace. The building is vacant at the present time. Kaiser Panel vacated at the end of last year. It has since become a graffiti magnet, and a good place to go find some copper in the middle of the night, if you'd like to look for some over there, if the security guard didn't catch you first.
Is any left?
What?
Probably not.
Well, there's a little bit still left in there. There's a guard at the facility right now. The facility has deteriorated in condition, and vandalism has been a problem lately, and that's kind of the condition of that, of that facility at the present time. What we want to do is go in and acquire the facility and renovate it, bring it up to the standards we would need for manufacturing. What we are is GST Manufacturing, again, is a two-facility location. This would be our third facility initially. What we build is anything out of metal, but some things that you would note, that you have seen some other places, we're rapidly growing in the sheet metal variety of shopping mall carts and kiosks. So if you go into a shopping mall like Northeast Mall, and you see the shopping displays out in the middle of the mall, we're building a number of those out of steel at the present time. We've got three major customers in that arena. Those are the kind of units that you would be proud to put your name on. So we're very pleased with that. We're very big in the food service industry. So we are building kitchens and stainless steel equipment that you would see in serving lines. For example, we just finished Dell Children's Hospital down in Austin, Texas, where we built out the entire serving facilities. Harris Methodist Southwest was built by us. We are, we're engaged in looking at the Cowboy Stadium right now, building some food service equipment for them. So we do a lot of stainless steel work as well. We're also fairly large in the cinema business. We build the, the projection port windows in the back of the theaters when you go inside, you sit down, watch the movie. The thing that keeps the sound from intruding in your movie experience is that projection port. We build the stainless steel that's used in soft drink dispensers and popcorn bag holders, things like that. We also, at our Samuel's facility over near the Stockyards, build some oilfield service componentry, not the big rigs, but we build components that go on big rigs. And we sell to customers like Halliburton, Stewart and Stevenson, people like that throughout the southwest. We build some items for telecommunications. We have customers like Vertex Communications over in Kilgore, where we're building parabolic dish components for, for telecommunications purposes. Currently have a hundred and eighty-two employees. That number tends to bounce up and down, ten plus or minus at any given time. We're in a hundred and fifteen thousand square feet. Notice this facility is a hundred and eighteen thousand of manufacturing space. So over time, what we hope to bring to Haltem City is growth. We would like to approach the city manager and the, in the city with another permit to build on the property, another low-height facility that we could expand into. We're guessing somewhere right now in the neighborhood of forty to seventy thousand square feet of a different, additional manufacturing space. We would hope our employment would grow over time as well. We're targeting forty people within six months of occupancy initially. We would expect that as we consolidate them to go up in the, well above two hundred range. Any questions about GST at this point? If you would like to see me about stainless steel counters after this is over, I'd be happy to talk to you. We build really nice stuff, Mr. Clark, and it's not cheap, though, should point out. Proposed usage, we have a three-phase plan. In two thousand and eight, within, again, within a few months of occupancy, we would expect to be about forty people on-site. We will do finishing and assembly only at that point, a little bit of welding, a little bit of finishing, some painting on that facility site. And then, once we get that done in Phase Two, which will be no later than two thousand and ten, possibly earlier, we will add another sixty-five people to that site as we close out the Samuel's facility and move it over. Phase Three could happen anytime between December and two thousand and fifteen. We just don't know when. I put two thousand and twelve, two thousand and fifteen. It depends on how soon that the, the folks that are landlords in the downtown Fort Worth area would like for us to leave. Once we do that, we'll add another hundred and twenty-five people to that site. And that, that's what we're doing presently, is a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty people on that site as we speak. And that's without much growth, that we'll be doing those kinds of things. Processes we use, so you can be familiar with what we do, we have laser cutters, we cut steel with beams of light. We've got two laser cutting machines, would hope to add a third in the not-too-distant future. We use CNC punching, like most of the metal fabrication people do in the area. We're not one of these big, heavy fabricators, we're not the ones that build the eighteen-wheel trucks, but we build pieces for them, all the way down to small gadgets that you would see that's no bigger than a quarter. Metal forming, we do a lot of breaking, bending of metal, welding, do a lot of welding, and then a lot of finishing, where we take the, the welded product and smooth it up and get it ready to be painted, then paint it, assemble it oftentimes, and then ship it out the door. The purpose of the zoning request is the rules and regulations, the ordinances of, of Haltem City require that sheet metal facilities be zoned M2. Some of the uses we have, it's good to have a conditional use permit. For example, we would like to be doing some painting on-site. We do powder coat painting, which is the most non-invasive form of painting you can do. Generally, you don't even have to exhaust it to the atmosphere, it's all self-contained in the building. And wet painting as well, much like a low-end automotive shop, one that you're not doing a lot of, a lot of real VOC dumping to the atmosphere, but still some wet painting would go on in the facility. The thing that fits us is the building size is right for us to start, the property size is right for a little bit of growth, which is what we're looking for. The location is good for us. Most of our customers, ninety percent of them, are in the metroplex area, so this facility fits us well, although we do ship a lot to Houston and up into Oklahoma. We do have expansion in our eyes, and this property has significant power already to it, which fits us well. The electrical power in our facilities are, are very important to us. Reasons we'd like to propose to you that we, we think would make sense for the city to approve it, the property immediately adjacent, I mean with just a stone's throw, almost what you could throw a stone to, are zoned M2, so this is not a far reach. Secondly, the building is vacant, and this would put it to active use. It's a low-height building, doesn't have a lot of marketability to it for things like distribution centers for larger warehousing. Phase Three, we think will be around two fifty by the end of Phase Three is total employment. Some of our employees come all the way from Garland over. So a light rail service, if you can induce them to do that, would really be good for us. We would like that a lot. We, we also like to draw from employees like we see in the immediate vicinity of the, of the facility. That really fits the kind of people that we really like to work with. They're good folks, and that's what we're looking for, is good, solid people who like to work. Increased tax revenues, when we buy the facility, we're paying more than you have it on the books for, so I'm sure that, that the city manager is going to make sure that the property taxes go up for some reason. That just grabs me, that's going to happen. Hopefully, it will be a meager increase. I should point out in the word "meager" spell "cheap," just so you know. Upgrades to the buildings and industrial park, we'll be doing a lot of work. We've agreed with the Planning and Zoning Commission that we're going to be doing landscaping in front of the building. The Planning and Zoning Commission, we started out wanting to only put in twelve trees, they took us to twenty-four, and now we've come back at thirty-two, just so you know, trying to finish it out. We intend to make this a little more quiet area back here, it'll be a little more aesthetically pleasing than it has been before. The facilities will be painted, we're taking up the old asphalt that's out front, taking up the all-weather parking, which is a rock. It's really pretty nice, but we'll be replacing it hopefully with a concrete or as, new asphalted area. We'll be putting up a fence around it, a screening fence. We do have to use the outside yard, as most metal people do, and we intend to put up a concrete fence around the property, a fence that's high enough that you don't see over it, high enough that it's not easily scaled, but also high enough that our guys don't take things out, we don't expect them to take out at the close of the day. If you get my drift, that's pretty important to us, too. Our use is consistent with the past owners. We're not too far different from what Kaiser Panel was doing. They were bending metal and putting things together. We build a little bit heavier stuff, but not a whole lot than what they were doing. There's no change in the environmental impact. We'll have one proceeds, one process, processy where there will be any discard from the facility, and not only discard, will be from, from washing parts off before we paint them. We currently do that under a permit with the city of Fort Worth. It will be fully permitted through Haltem City. I understand you use the city of Fort Worth, and believe me, they know us well. And it's, it's gone very good for us. We're in good compliance and good standards with them. If you'll look at the performance standards, we don't expect to generate any emissions that would be offensive, so we think we're going to be in pretty good stead with, with the area. Traffic, all of our traffic will be contained on the premises, we will have trucks going to and from. I won't make any mistake in telling you that there will, will be trucks, both medium and large size, going to and from the facility. We're estimating about twenty-five large trucks a day at the most. We will have our own vehicles, which are typically smaller, like bobtail trucks, going back and forth delivering parts and picking up parts. The truck traffic all stays on the property as it turns, as it loads and unloads. If you're familiar with that property, the unloading bays are actually indoors. You're actually backed down into the unloading bay to unload, which is good for us, because we need all-weather unloading. It's really a good thing. Air emissions, you shouldn't have a noticeable change noise. We have been encroached on by the city of Fort Worth. We literally have people not much farther from the back wall to that wall that are high-end residential, living right next to our facility. Now, they weren't that way when we moved in, but they are now, and we seem to get along well. We don't have any complaints, so I don't expect noise to be a problem. Of course, our purchase of the property is contingent upon the zoning change. Without it, we can't move here. So we're, we'd like to have the zoning change conditional use permit. That's all I know to say, so if you've got any question of any kind, we'll answer any question about Sherry or me, or, we've been married a long time, that works well. Comments, questions?
Any, any questions from the dais? Mr. Sutton?
Yeah, the concrete fence or wall, we'd heard it might be brick. Apparently, you're, you're now leaning toward concrete. About how high are you going to make that?
Well, we, we promised the Planning and Zoning Commission it'd be seven feet. Now, what we've priced out is actually eight feet.
Okay.
I'd like to have the higher wall.
All right.
We, we have some pretty high-value stuff inside the, the property line. We have stainless steel, and stainless steel right now.
Sure.
Copper, they'll come over a wall in a heartbeat.
Right.
We have chain-linked fences that get cut all the time where we are.
Would that be a poured concrete wall, or?
We'd like to have a tilt-up type of concrete wall.
Tilt-up wall, okay.
We've got a design that we've seen at RE Sweeney that really appeals to us.
Okay.
And we also like the flat finish. And I know that a lot of the neighborhoods that you see residential like to buy stuff from superior concrete that has a brick look laid in it. But there's a problem with that. If you get graffiti, and I've noticed this building has already been repainted in places, spot-painted a few times from graffiti. I like something that we can, when we paint the fence, we just buy more paint.
Okay.
So when graffiti comes along, it's pretty easy to do, and I would expect we'll see some graffiti. So we're, we're proposing a flat concrete eight-foot fence around the property.
Okay, and you'll be taking care of anything that happens on the outside as terms of graffiti, is what I'm hearing?
Yeah, that's, that's the plan. I think from what I've heard that if we don't, we would expect to hear from the city, and they'll remind us, too, which we expect that. No, we, we want to be a good neighbor and a good citizen.
Thank you. Mr. Hutchison.
Mr. Lambert, you explained that you're going to turn your parking lot into a concrete parking lot. We seem to have had some weather problems here, and especially drainage problems here in Haltem City. Mr. Pliska, this may be more a question for you. Do we foresee any drainage issues now that he's going to concrete that whole parking lot?
No, sir. This, this was passed by engineering before it came, before you, so engineering has signed off on it.
Okay.
The site plan was, was reviewed by fire, engineering, my department, and the inspections department, and he has met that requirement and will drain to Genada effectively.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the dais? Okay.
Let me add something, and we've, we've been working with you for a while on this, right? Mainly with Ms. White, or Mr. Pliska, or Mr. Howell. Mr. Lambert, despite his side comments to me earlier, has been a complete joy to, to work with in this thing, and we, we look forward to having him and his firm here. I think he'll be a great addition to the community and, and to the, the business community. We, we look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess that's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. This is a public hearing, so I'll now open up the, the meeting to public comments. Any, anyone want to make a comment for or against, or ask, ask questions? Saying done, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to dispose. This is for item eleven. Now, Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve ordinance Z-002-07 as presented.
Mr. Hutchison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That'd be for a second.
Been moved in second to approve Z-002-07 on first reading. This is to...
Let me, let me clarify. The actual ordinance number, and it's not on the agenda here, but the ordinance number is O-2007-023-15.
Thank you. All right. And this is for the first reading. Any, any further discussion? Please register your vote. That is unanimous. I'll, now entertain a motion for item twelve. Mr. Hutchison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve a conditional use permit, CU-003-07.
Okay, and that's, Mr. Mayor, what, what's the ordinance number?
I'm sorry, the ordinance number is zero dash, I mean, excuse me, O-2007-024-15.
I'll amend it to say the ordinance number instead of the... I'll amend it to say the ordinance number instead of the conditional use permit number. Ms. Branson?
That would be for a second, Mayor.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve item 12, that's a conditional use permit CU-003-07, and ordinance number O-2007...
-024.
Any further discussion? Wait a minute. Just caught me. Did we get any public hearing on item 12 before we... Did we do them together? Okay. Okay, all right, I just, okay, I wanted to make sure that we did that. All right, it has been moved in second. Any further discussion on item 12? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Lambeth, appreciate it. Next on the agenda is the Visitor Citizens Forum. This is time set aside for any person having business before the council that is not scheduled on the agenda to speak to the council. All comments must be directed toward the presiding officer rather than an individual council member or staff. Each speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request forum, and must refrain from personal attacks toward any individual. Council cannot discuss or debate any issue brought forth at this time, nor can any formal action be taken, as it is not a posted agenda item in accordance with Open Meetings Law. We have one person who's signed up here tonight, John Weaver. Mr. Weaver wants to speak of Halton City Pee-wee football. Mr. Weaver, you'll have about six minutes, and please introduce yourself.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is John Weaver, I live at 2,000 Halton Road.
Okay.
I have three children, I'm a single dad, I have one with a disability, a mental disability. My son plays Pee-wee football for this association, for Halton City, he hasn't for the last five years. He's pretty violent, he has ADHD and paranoid schizophrenia. He was diagnosed with that from MHMR. So every time I go to the league and to the coaches, I tell the coaches that my son has disabilities, this and this and this. This year, I come to sign up, they come up to me out of 400 kids, and because my son's been thrown out of games for fighting, which I understand that, I am all for that, you know, but they come up, and he's been thrown out of one game, one game every time for fighting. They come up to me before I sign up and tell me, there's a zero tolerance on the president and the commissioner come up and tell me, there's a zero tolerance on fighting for this league. And I said, okay, took my son home, talked to him for a week, he said he is not going to fight. Okay? We go through the season, and my son hadn't fought, but he cussed someone. He gets kicked out for one game, which it took him a week to tell me that. This has all happened the first week of October here. He gets kicked out of the game, so they debate and go to the board, and they tell me he's kicked out. So they tell me I can appeal the process. I come back to their board, try to appeal the process, no, we're not going to have a board meeting. So here it is, I wait 14 days, I believe, or actually 21 days from when the event happened, to come up here Saturday, I went to a board meeting with the Halton City Pee-wee Football League. Okay? I have a nine-question summary that I spoke to them about, because I've played for, like I said, five seasons. Every year, I had a different coach, because my son is challenged, okay? My son can't take people yelling at him, screaming at him. Okay, he has a coach this year that has a disability also, doesn't scream and yell, was doing pretty well, never, hadn't fought one time this year, not one time, practiced through anything else, okay? But we get back to this situation, and I go up to the board meeting to appeal my process that's been taking me 21 days, okay? They say my piece, record the stuff, put in my agenda about a certain football coach that my son played for, he hit somebody on Thursday, he played him that Saturday, but he's up there sitting and making judgments on my son, saying that he's not a bad kid, but he doesn't mind him hitting him while he's playing on his team, okay? But anyway, I get all the way through there, I waste, you know, this is three weeks, numerous amount of time, try to set up on Wednesday with an attorney to be present, they keep blowing me off, blowing me off. Monday, or I mean, Saturday, go up there, sit for three and a half hours, I find out they don't even vote on the subject. I mean, my agenda, what I brought up about a person dragging my son back and forth down the league, that wouldn't even vote it on, okay? He's going to be able to coach Saturday, but my son can't play, he still hadn't played. So I just think there's a big dispersity, I mean, just something there that shouldn't be there, you know, because, I mean, he never said nothing why it was playing for him, but he's the biggest one saying stuff about him now, against him playing. And all I want to do is for my son, like I told the commissioners, okay, I don't know if it's, if my son, I can't say my son ain't going to do it two weeks from now, okay, but you told me a zero tolerance on fighting, my son hasn't fought, that's what he promised me, okay, but you're giving, because he has fought in the past, you know, you're judging him today. And like I told you, he has a disability. I can, that was a big step for me, okay, that my son didn't fight, that he walked away, did an obscene gesture, okay, but he walked away. That's a big step for someone like that. But they have no idea about this. I mean, I see him now, I mean, just like when I was at the deal when I taped it, okay, because I taped my meeting, because I keep getting the little run-arounds, the little run-arounds, and I'm just tired of it. I mean, this is a, they got 400 kids there, they made sure they came and told me, out of every one of them, that they couldn't fight. So right there, they're signaling me out, you know, but they don't understand that. But that was signaling my son out. So everything, they set him up to fail. If he did anything, they were ready to kick him out of the league. They should have told me that, I would have kept my money, could have went somewhere else. Well, they didn't know him, okay? But like I said, my son is challenged, very hard, difficult to deal with, you know, but I have to deal with him. The school has to deal with him, you're able to deal with him, you know, but I just think I'm getting a runaround from the board. I mean, I went up there and asked them for, when they told me this, to me, I think, they do not give any player conduct reports out when you sign up for this. I've been here six years, or played for six teams, never got one player conduct, how a player is supposed to react, but they made sure I signed up for that candy money and did the fundraisers, okay, before I left that building. So I just think that's a little step, I mean, it is 2008, you know, I called around to other leagues, they said, yes, we get player conduct books right when you sign up. I mean, that, I know my daughter goes to middle school, she gets player conduct right when she signs up for an athletic event.
Mr. Weaver, can you wrap it up here pretty quick?
Yes, sir, I was. Yes, I was.
Appreciate it.
But I just wanted to bring it up, because every time I get the runaround, through the board, through the rec, I mean, I don't know which one to go. I go to one, they give me a set of papers, I go to the meeting, I get a brand-new set of papers. So that's all I wanted to say, and I will talk to the rec center director.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Tom, I'm not sure, what is the city's, I mean, can we just get a general understanding of what involvement the city has in Pee-wee football or any other association that's using our facilities? Is that appropriate?
No.
Yep. I mean, I know we need to be careful not to, you know, debate it, but just...
Go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, that's fine. If you want to ask for clarification from Tom on what the relationship is, you can do that. But we're not allowed, so the audience knows we're not allowed to debate or deliberate the subject tonight, because it's not posted on the agenda.
All right. There is a facilities use agreement, just as council member Reese alluded to, that the city executes with the various different associations, not just football, we do it with baseball and softball and some of the other things. The different leagues that are, the children's leagues that operate in this community are done through the associations, through parents, concerned, you know, interested folks that want to be part of that. The rec staff, there's some guidelines that the rec staff provides for these different associations, and we have a, we keep, we monitor it to a degree, but we don't get into it, we try not to get into it to where we're telling them what to do and how to do it. We try to let them do what they feel needed to do. Now, there have been times that, at least in my five years here, that there's been some times that maybe we need to step in and do some things. And I'm not saying this is one of them, but there's been issues a time or two, and it sounds like, I mean, I've only heard one side for six minutes, so, and it's, I don't think, you know, me or anybody on the staff needs to be judge and jury in this, but there's seems to be something we need to look into, and I'm confident Mr. Henry and his staff can at least provide some assistance to getting that, at least improving the situation. I'm not, it's, there's probably going to get to a point to where not everybody's going to be happy, but we can get to a solution where we can move on, to where some things aren't limbo, so we'll, I'll talk with Mr. Henry, and we'll see what we can do.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's all the signups we have. Anyone else want to speak on anything? Okay, yeah, come on up and introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Eric Cowan, I'm the junior league commissioner for Halton City Pee-wee Football, which John Weaver's son plays for. Just want to do some clarification as to what the vote was from the board and why we took the action. According to our bylaws, that are approved bylaws that have been handed to the recreation center, section 12 violations, number A, any player who habitually plays dirty or conducts himself in an unsupporting manner can be expelled from the conference at the discretion of board of directors. The day he was expelled, or he was expelled from a game, the votes were, the first vote was, is he habitual? Based on his past fighting and language, he was deemed habitual. Based on that, we made the vote whether we kick him out of the conference or not. The vote was that we kick him out of the conference. We told him, I told him that same day, that night after we had it, our board meeting, which was the same day his boy was expelled. I called him that night and let him know. He had a right to an appeal. The next week, we did not have a quorum for a board meeting, so we could not hold a quorum, could not hold a board meeting for his appeal. We had, last week was the second game he had missed, which was the 14th day. We had a board meeting Saturday, that's the 14th day. He brought his appeal to the board, and his argument was that his son was an habitual fighter. Habitual, and our thing is that he has an unsporting manner, and that's what we voted on, and I told him the Saturday that it happened, or that we talked about it, that he needed to bring evidence to the board that his son was not habitual, unsporting conduct, and he did not present his case in that manner. His manner that he brought to us was that his son, he knows, is habitual fighter, habitual language problem. He had no time brought before the board before this happened that his son was paranoid schizophrenic. He told us that he was ADDHD, which about half of our kids in the league have some sort of ADD or ADDHD. The candy money is voluntary, you do not have to take candy money. I have a daughter that's in the league, we did not opt to take candy money. And player conduct, it is in our bylaws with violations, and we told everybody there was a zero tolerance policy based upon what the rec center told us. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
Do you have a chance to rephrase?
No, sir, I mean, we've, I think there's a chance for you to speak to Mr. Henry.
It's, this isn't the forum to do that, is mainly what the mayor's trying to say.
Right.
We'll get with you.
Anyone else want to speak tonight? Then I'll close this portion of the meeting and move on to the next item, item 13, resignation of board members. I believe we do have one resignation. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I perceive the resignation from Bill Dunn, resigning from the PNC, and he wishes it to be effective 12/31/07. He will serve until the end of December.
Thank you. And I want to say something here, just to insert my deep appreciation for Bill Dunn. Bill's been on that Planning and Zoning Commission for a long time, he came on when I was there, and just a fine citizen, very knowledgeable, the most knowledgeable person on the Planning and Zoning Commission when I was on there, admittedly, and I believe probably still is. Wonderful individual, a fine citizen, and we appreciate his, so much his input for all these years, and thank you, Bill. Mr. Sutton?
I just wanted to add to that, Bill's an expert on mixed-use retail development, probably more so than anyone in the city, and we're really going to miss his expertise in that and the expertise he gave to the planning and zoning. We want to congratulate him and wish him well in his future endeavors and things that he's planning on going into.
So I'll take a, we'll now have a vote to confirm Mr. Dunn's resignation. Please register your vote. That is unanimous. Any other resignations? The next on the agenda will be the appointment or reappointment of boards, item 14, any appointments or reappointments from someone else? If not, I do have one. This is, this is an appointment for the Economic Development Corporation, appoint Ken Gibson. Mr. Gibson is a longtime citizen of Halton City, works at J.P. Morgan Chase Bank, and we're pleased to have him join us on the EDC with the concurrence of the council. So I asked for such concurrence, is there any discussion? Please register your vote. That is unanimous. Thank you very much for that. Next item is item 15, excused absence of council members. Mr. Holcomb is away this evening, and he had something come up at work.
He's got a client who is stressing about water right now.
Okay.
Coming into a project.
Okay.
He needs to deal with that client.
Ms. Reese?
I make a motion to approve his absence this once, after this, they're unexcused.
Just this once?
Everything's unexcused after tonight.
All right, I'll have him, he's on notice. Mr. Clark?
As for a second, one ten.
All right. Then any further discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous. I believe that's it for the regular agenda. We will now move into executive session under sections 551-071-072 and -074.